It is Wednesday, November 6th. It's 4:30. We'll start with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Byrne?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Mayor DeVere?
Here. Okay, item two is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes. Item three is the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
It is, I'm sorry, Dean, I'll eat it a little better. Madam Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented for the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. There's no discussion. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Okay, all ayes. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move to item 5A, which is our fire department. Change order request.
Madam Mayor, Council, good afternoon. Hopefully you got the email that I did send out.
What?
I believe, what? About a week ago, to give a little bit of explanation on why I'm here tonight. This is a change order request for Fire Station Number 6, for the front bay or front garage doors. If you recall, when we went through the process of developing a budget, we weren't ready to say that's what we wanted yet because we felt like more research was needed. And so we've conducted that. We've gone to a station that has these doors to look at the mechanisms, look at the opening. Just briefly, the doors open in seven seconds as opposed to the standard kind of 15 to 20 of our existing doors. These doors don't have springs. Currently, we, twice a year, have someone come in and adjust the springs on our garage doors. These don't have springs, they have a gear mechanism. They do fold open horizontally, not vertically, which is a challenge for some of our folks. As that door goes up and it goes beyond the windshield, you don't know how far up it is. And so if you think about the stuff on the back of a fire engine that sits higher than your cab, that can be an issue as far as going out the door. The other feature that we think is very applicable, that we like, is the manual mechanism. So if for some reason the electricity goes out at our station, we do have a generator that takes a little while to kick in. The mechanism on these doors is simply a pull chain. You open the doors. Right now, at our current stations with those front bay doors, you have to get up on top, pull the cord, and then chain it open, which takes a lot longer to do. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Miss Little Roberts?
Hearing none. I would like to make a motion that we approve the change order for the four-fold doors for Fire Station 6.
And is your mic on? Yep, it is.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Thank you.
Thanks for the email.
Item 5B is under our community development, and it's a discussion about shared vehicle update and possible next steps.
Madam Mayor? I think Mr. Hood is the one that's going to present on this, so he might be en route from his office.
Okay, well, he probably thought there would be a lot more dialogue and giving a hard time to the chief, and so wasn't anticipating that. From a legal perspective, how are things going?
So, Madam Member, Mr. Council, I was in a meeting this week and this did go to the Transportation Commission for some feedback as well. Couple of things that Caleb will share with you. We did get data in October from the provider, from Bird. They've never fully deployed the number of scooters in the city that they had committed to. We haven't reached out to them to find out why that is, so that's a question, I think, for the council discussion. We've had very few complaints. Mr. Hood is the one that receives the complaints. He's the connection for that, but we see very few. There's been pretty good usage in the parks, so we haven't had concerns from the Parks Department about usage. There are some speed controls that occur and such. So some of that's been okay. Here's Mr. Hood. So we haven't had a lot of complaints, so I mean, if one metric is that, that's been a very positive thing, that we haven't had a lot of public issues or concerns that have been raised to the city directly. Not a lot of issues from police that we've been made aware of, so again, I can turn it over to Mr. Hood, but that's where I know we are at this point, is not a lot of complaints and kind of wanting to seek direction on where do we go next. With the internal group, we had some recommendations, but I don't want to instill Mr. Hood's thunder, so.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Hello, Caleb.
Madam Mayor, Council. Sorry I was late there. We were having a kickoff meeting to discuss the 10-mile Village downtown bus route and lost track of time there, so my apologies. Thank you, Mr. Neri, for covering. So, and I'm sorry, I hope this isn't too repetitive to what Bill just mentioned, but I'm here today to kind of give you an update as we prepare to look at the next year of service for shared vehicles in Meridian. The contract with Bird Rides, Inc. expires at the end of the year, and we wanted to explore with you a couple of options as we look into calendar year 2020. Before talking about next year, though, I wanted to give you just a quick update, and when I walked in, I heard Mr. Neri, you know, kind of summarizing from staff's perspective how well it's gone, the issues we've had, and there have been some, but it hasn't maybe been as robust as we would have thought going into this program. I think I would credit a lot of that to the work that staff did before launch in preparing the terms of the franchise agreement and coordinating all the departments to come together to put up an FAQ on our website, to have ready for the various departments at City Hall when someone comes and has a complaint or a concern about these, to document it in a database. So with IT's help, we have set up both that website, FAQs, and an internal flow chart was developed and training given to city staff, including some of the volunteers or through the volunteers, if there were complaints about that, to document this, so we understand how much time is being spent dealing with this and where those issues were. So I'll share with you in a minute some of those numbers from our CRM database and what we've tracked to date. The one note I will mention is that the Police Department, if there were any crashes, they have their own database. They aren't using this. I'm not aware, though, of any, in Meridian anyways, crashes with e-scooters. So we've been, and we've been talking about this again, with key department staff anyways, about this program. The clerk has pulled up, thank you, Chris, numbers for the first two months. So Bird was authorized to deploy 1st of August, so what you see on the screen now is what they shared with me last month for August, and I have September as well. You can see, and it's pretty self-explanatory, but broken down into weeks, and some of the weeks aren't a full seven days, like that first week, 8-1 to 8-4. You can see the number of scooters deployed and then how many trips taken. What I don't know is if that 13-17 number, the total monthly riders, if those are unique users, or if that was the same, you know, maybe there's 800 users in there and some of them are multiple users, or if those are all different people, or if that's... Yeah, so I just don't know how that's reported. So I got to understand from them a little bit more what that 13-17 users actually means, if those are, again, unique users. I think we'll just jump to September real quick. Real, real similar numbers. You can see deployment does kind of vary a little bit as far as numbers of scooters, and I will just note the inter-agency agreement right now does say they'll deploy at least a minimum of 100. So they are technically in violation of our inter-agency agreement. I have not contacted them and said, hey, you need to put more of these on the street. I figure they're a private business. I realize that they're in violation, but I'm not going to say, go put more out there. They're going to put, if they thought people would ride them, they're going to deploy more. They could put up to 150, and they aren't. That's been my discretion, though, but there you see the numbers. They're even half of what their agreement said they would deploy as the minimum. I see that getting potentially even lower as we get into colder weather. I don't know that, so just something to consider. And that kind of leads me in. Well, first, let's talk about the database. So I did pull the numbers this afternoon in our CRM database. There are nine cases in there. IT set up for us five different options to classify. When someone calls the clerk's office, or planning, or Public Works, or whoever to complain, you can either drop down, was it a collision? Is it a disabled scooter? Was there a nuisance issue? Was it a parking issue, or other? So those are the five categories that we're tracking these under. Under the collisions, again, we have zero. I have zero collisions in the database. I've also had zero under the disabled category. We've had two nuisance complaints. Again, this is documented in the database. There may have been more, but those are the ones that are documented. Five parking complaints and two other complaints, with about an hour and a half of staff time spent on those nine cases in total. But again, that isn't all the time staff has spent, has just been dealing with complaints. We're coordinating and discussing, how can we make this better before the rollout and even answer getting, you know, just trying to get up to speed for this next year and understand what's maybe what our recommendation is going to be to you all to look forward for the next year. So with that, we've had two meetings this past month, and a meeting with Parks and Finance and Legal, Public Works, Planning. We would really like to see a full year's worth of data to understand maybe what, and maybe have a ramp up and ramp down provision in this agreement. So looking at maybe doing another 12 months with Bird. The consensus was at that meeting, they've been pretty responsive. It's worked pretty well. Again, we don't, at the beginning of this, we didn't define what success looks like. What are we really trying to accomplish as the city? So for us to answer that, it was really tough. Like, is it our job to push more rides? Like, there's really no incentive from city staff or the city's perspective. We don't get, we talked about the pricing structure, right, and you could have done that, but we didn't. So really, there's no incentive for us to make this successful as an organization. Now, do we want them to be, sir, we wish them success, but are we supposed to dedicate time to making them successful? Anyways, but that being said, it's been relatively, you know, an hour and a half, couple, few hours of staff time, hasn't been burdensome. So I think it's, I think what we came to consensus earlier this week was we would recommend, our recommendation to council would be to do another 12 months with Bird, collect a full year's worth of data, and then figure out maybe what we can change and tweak going forward. Maybe that's going out for RFP again the year after with multiple vendors. But it seemed to, again, I don't want to say this, it's worked well because you just saw the ridership numbers, and they aren't high. So I don't know that anyone says it's been a successful program. That's stretched, so don't mishear me. I'm not saying that. But if we were, all the concern on our side was about, oh, we're going to be spending hours and days dealing with complaints on this, and it just hasn't turned out to be the case. But again, to be fair, it was August, September to date, so there really hasn't been a big sample size of time and data collection, so. But we'll take your direction. That's why it's on this workshop, is to gear up for December, January, when there's new contract, and just wanted to share that, the information we have to date and what we've been talking about as staff. Again, my apologies for being late to this meeting, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Caleb. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Caleb, I think it's a good idea to try to get a year's worth of data, especially with seasonal issues that'll affect in there. However, I think the major purpose of the data, of getting that year's worth of data is to determine what issues we might run into with multiple vendors and a lot more scooters. There's no way we're going to be able to determine that with a third to half of the scooters that we require as a minimum out there. So I think to be able to get effective data, to be able to make all those proper decisions a year from now, that council would probably be served better having more units out there. My hope would be to, you know, try to enforce that minimum number a little bit better and see then what might happen.
Madam Mayor?
Caleb, just a quick question to build off of that. How can you encourage them to meet their minimum numbers? I imagine they've pulled them back because they're getting very low ridership.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the terms of that would be, we would basically tell them that they're in violation and they need to comply with that, or they'd be in violation of our agreement or contract with them, so. And I think they probably would deploy more if we just asked them to. Again, they could put them out there. I don't know what they would do to actually encourage more ridership, or what we could even do to maybe help them do that, but I haven't put them on notice that we know that they're in violation. I could do that and just ask them to come into compliance.
Well, I guess one question to at least ask them is, what efforts are they doing to build ridership? You know, how are they out there encouraging people to, you know, use the scooters? Just a thought.
I can ask something.
I'm sorry. Dennis is, or who, I don't...
Go ahead.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Madam Mayor? These aren't being used. I don't love the idea of doubling the amount of unused scooters in Meridian. That said, I think we established a process that we would open it back up right at the end of the year. This information, I assume that Caleb's provided us as a public document. If any other vendor wants to present or submit, they're going to see there's not a lot of ridership in Meridian. If they see it and they think they've got a better mousetrap to Madam Mayor's point, to incentivize ridership, that's why we've said, let's have multiple vendors. So I'm not sold on, let's not invite anybody in, and I'm not super sold on, let's have another vendor, and I think it's, at least going through the process that we outlined, to at least invite vendors the opportunity to submit and go through the process and render a decision. I don't love the idea of doubling the amount of unused scooters in Meridian.
Mr. Byrne?
Madam. Do you want to go? Okay. So this data doesn't surprise me at all, actually. This is exactly what I expected. As a business owner, I certainly wouldn't want to be told how many scooters I would, you know, I think on the lines of Councilman Cavanagh, I wouldn't want to be told how many scooters were being, or I should, you know, should be deployed, knowing that ridership is so low. I just don't know if that makes a whole lot of sense. I, the data speaks. It's black and white, not a whole lot of wiggle room, so. See what happens in the next couple of months, and we'll have some serious discussions in November, it sounds like, or December.
Ms. Mylum, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, really along the same lines. First of all, maybe the reason we haven't had a lot of complaints is because we haven't had a lot of scooters out there, and so doubling the amount of scooters that are parked on the sidewalks could just, you know, magnify the number of complaints. And like you said, Caleb, this is a private enterprise. If, you know, and it's a cart and a horse. Are they, is there not a lot of ridership because there's not a lot of scooters? Or is there not a lot of scooters because there's not a lot of ridership? And then that's not our problem, I think, to define. We have an agreement with them to allow their business to park on our sidewalks and in our parks and to do business here, but it's not for us to dictate how, I don't believe. If their scooters are better used somewhere else than clogging up our streets, I'm okay with that. I also, I agree that if somebody else wants to come in and they think that they have a better model or some better marketing that they're going to do, and they think their ridership will be better and improve the scooter usage, I'm okay with that. But I don't think that it's, I would not be in favor of mandating them to, you know, double the amount of scooters that they have out there.
Madam Mayor? I tend to agree. I'm not big on requiring that we make them put more out if they're not in use. It seems from watching the numbers that when they are, there's more demand. They are putting more scooters out. And my question, Caleb, would be, are they in any, is their thought process that maybe this isn't working for them, and they're not going to look at doing another year?
So, Madam Mayor, I have not asked Arthur that question. He's been very responsive in the handful of times I've had to communicate with him over the past, since August. He's been very responsive, but I have not asked him that question. Hey, with these numbers, are you guys interested in doing a year two? I can ask him that. I, again, just, we haven't had those conversations. Our conversations haven't been, hey, can you correct this? I got a complaint. Can you get this taken care of? Not. Can you share with us what your plans are for next year? So, but that said, I will reach out to him and kind of just touch base with him, see what efforts they are doing, not require them to deploy more, but just say, hey, is that in the works? Is that something, are you trying to be successful in Meridian? And if so, maybe there's something I can do to help. I can't spend a whole bunch of time with them, but if it's things that they think we can even do to sort of get it off the ground, I mean, we do, I don't want to speak for everybody. I think these could be of benefit to our community. You know, first and last mile things, you know, short trips instead of having to use the automobile. But again, they can't just rely on the city to make it go. So I'll have some of those conversations. What can we do in the last couple of months, even though snow is probably going to start flying soon? What, if anything, can we do to see if we can work these last couple of months and improve rides or ridership or use or whatever? So maybe it's infrastructure concerns, too. We just haven't had really any of those. I haven't had any of those conversations with him. He hasn't reached out to me either to have that conversation, but I'll engage a little bit more.
Thank you. It just seemed like they were hitting, falling so far from their mark that they might not even be interested in continuing this, but I do think we should open it up to anyone that thinks they could do a better job and might get more ridership.
So I guess, Caleb, if you can come back after you've had a chance to talk to Arthur and see what some of their impressions have been, and you can come back and update the council and have, continue this conversation.
Madam Mayor, I will do that. Just before we move on, should we, though, also begin to, I mean, just from the spokes, it sounds like we're going to go out for an RFP more than likely, though, later this year. I mean, that's going to take some time to dust that off and make sure it's current. You know, we did talk about that to his staff, if that was the desire of the council, remove the exclusive clause, or at least the confusion about, you know, who can apply and that we can have multiple vendors potentially, but at least move that direction. No decision has been made, but should we, at least that level of effort to put together a draft RFP as well and prepare? Again, we're in November, so we don't have a whole lot of time to move on this and get requests if we're going to be ready to go in January.
It would be interesting if the, if more companies reply, then there is an interest to see if there is a market here. If they don't, maybe they take what Bird has done so far and said, it won't work in our kind of community, so.
I will, so I will talk to Arthur. I'll also follow up. I'll just also throw it out there. I mean, this was a pilot, and I'm not advocating for this, but we don't have to do anything in 2020. You know, I can talk to him and say, you know, yeah, it didn't work for us. Good luck to somebody else and come back to you, and we can still go out for RFP, but we don't have to have a service, shared vehicle service provider. I mean, that's not a requirement, so.
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
Well, are you talking about if Bird decides they don't want to provide the service in Meridian?
So, Madam Mayor, I wasn't trying to imply if Bird says they aren't interested, we might not go out for RFP and see if someone else is, but just irregardless, you could make the decision, we're done with this. We've got enough data. The two, three months' data is enough. Just, it's not, our community's not set up for it. You could make that decision. We don't have to have a service provider.
Madam Mayor? Well, I wouldn't be for that. I think that, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't be ready to tell Bird, thanks, but no thanks. So because of the low amount of complaints that we've had, but I do think we should go out for RFP and see if there is any other interest. It might be, is the, is the number, the minimum number included in the RFP? Maybe that should come out. That would be my suggestion, maybe not have that, maybe that's not necessary to be part of it, since we're not really requiring that at this point.
Okay, any other comments? Keith, you want to come up to the microphone?
I was just discussing, you know, when we do go out for an RFP, we probably want to have, if we remove that minimum, we still would probably want a maximum. I mean, we have to put some parameters in our RFP so they understand what they're going to be proposing against. So I think we need to have some type of information. And we probably, even though we're winding down, I mean, I don't know if we should do a contract amendment, but if we're not going to hold them to the contract they currently have, I would rather amend that contract. I don't want to sit, I don't want to have a contract out there that we're not maintaining with our vendor or allowing them to violate or not fulfill the requirement. So I think it'd be best, even when we go out for an RFP in contract with somebody in the future, we want to show that we keep our vendors to our contracts.
Well, it doesn't sound like anyone has an issue removing the minimum.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Palmer.
I feel like this was a major point of the discussion last time, and then it was as if it never happened, but the conversation was up to two instead of exclusive, which I think would be an appropriate move from where we're at now, up to two, and then that way, when, no matter how many apply, one or two is the decision.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I guess my only caution about removing any type of a minimum is that would essentially allow, something I think this council contemplated, is awarding a contract to somebody who never actually deploys. And so, again, I trust staff. Look at the numbers. Come up with a number that you think is in line with what we've seen in kind of these low turnout months, so that the vendor is at least obligated to fulfill, I mean, you could say, I didn't, I'm not required to deploy any, so we didn't, which to me then kind of fails to achieve what we had at least intended. I think we spent a lot of time contemplating. We spent a lot of time talking scooters in 2019, and so.
So just to throw something out there, so if we've, if the number was 100, if you say, you know, that was the average, if you put a minimum of 100 for two, then you have 200 out there. Do you want 200 out there? I just want to know exactly what you're expecting from us, so we...
Madam Mayor? Sorry. Caleb had a number that was on one of the charts that was showing us what we had. I would say whatever that lowest number is, round it up, 50, so a minimum of 50. I mean, if that's a 50 from each vendor, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Council's amenable?
Thank you.
Ms. Mylum?
Then I guess we need to amend, obviously amend the contract we have with Bird to 50, if that's what we're going to do, and then hold them to it if they fall below that.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, my, what I was going to do is first talk to Arthur and say, which would you rather, do you want to, do you think you can make 100 work and be consistent with our current contract? Because if so, let's do that. That may be easier than amending the contract. But if it's, yeah, we'll throw 50 more out there, but they're just going to lay around, then I would say, let's just amend the contract then. I don't want to clutter the streets, but what can we do to get you to put 100 out that'll be used, you know?
Madam Mayor?
How do we even know how many they have out until they report it a month later?
It's in the rears. It is in the rears, so I don't, can't imagine today, though, Madam Mayor, they're putting out more than they were in September when the weather was nicer.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
The problem that I have with that, Caleb, is if the 100 aren't being used and we're putting out RFP and say we take on another vendor, and we're going to need to require the same, the same standard, so their minimum is going to be 100, which means we're going to have 200 out there, and if only 40 or 50 are being ridden, it is just cluttering the streets. So, I don't know, I would be for, because it's a business, they're going to put out as many as they can get ridden. The maximum is not 50, it's the minimum of 50. So I would, I'm for lowering the minimum to 50 for each vendor, and obviously, if they are going to get more ridership... And obviously, if they are going to get more ridership, they're going to put more scooters out and they can still put whatever, what was the maximum?
Up to 500 is what we allow.
Yeah, so I'd rather let them and their business model dictate how many they put out personally.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Caleb, do you have all your questions answered? What about you? We're good. Move on.
Thank you.
I think that that means bring back an amendment to 50. And, and that's what you consider in bringing a draft pact to council in terms of going out with an RFP and, and seeing what council says at that time. Adam Facy is a city council discussion that will be led by Mr. Kavner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel. I'll just stay up here if it's, if it's all the same. This is just a continuation of a, of a past conversation that you should all have in front of you, a draft ordinance. I know Rich is here from Code Enforcement to address some of the questions that came up in terms of what enforcement would look like should this be passed. I think this is just an opportunity for council to review. And if council is still supportive of moving forward, then we get this scheduled for a, a public hearing. But I think it's important, before we go that, that you've got the opportunity to hear from, from Rich and, and the concerns in terms of enforcement, what staffing would look like. So I'll turn over to Rich to be able to address his presentation and then we can discuss from there.
Hi, Rich.
Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Howard. Thanks for having me. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk. Mr. Kavner and I have had the opportunity to sit down and discuss this issue at length. And it's just a great opportunity for me to be able to stand before you and have you understand just the workflow that goes into the current enforcement of the current UDC section and then what it might entail if you were to move forward with the amendment. Hopefully, that'll give you a basis for understanding when you make your decision. So, currently, with the way the, the parking standards are set forth in the Unified Development Code, we, we receive a complaint of a prohibited vehicle being stored on private property. The officer will respond and verify whether or not there is a violation. They'll document that violation through photographs and a short report. And then they'll make contact with that property owner and educate them as to what the requirements are in the UDC and then set a reasonable compliance date to have them come into compliance. Just like all of our approach, we're educating before we're taking any enforcement. And most times, it's, all it takes is education and then the folks come into compliance. After that compliance date expires, the officer would return for the second time. And if the violation had been remedied, the case is closed. If it's not remedied, then a formal notice of violation letter would be served to the property owner. And then it would advise them that they could be subject to prosecution if they didn't come into compliance. And then we move forward with prosecution at the last resort if they didn't come into compliance. So we have two visits, one to verify and educate, and then two to confirm the violation still exists or it's been remedied. If you choose to move forward with the amendment as proposed, it's going to require a significant increase in the amount of work put in by my folks to document it. The complaint would come in, the officer would go to the property and verify that a violation existed. And they would have to document that the vehicle's there. If we have a time limit that a specific vehicle is allowed to be there, we're going to have to somehow mark that vehicle to start the talk, to start the time, to start the clock ticking. So if we have a 72-hour window allowed, somehow we're going to have to document that vehicle. Right now, when we document a vehicle's position and location on public property, it's super easy. We move up to the vehicle and we're able to mark the vehicle or mark the street around it to physically place that vehicle at a documented location. We can't do that on private property on a driveway. You know, we all have rights to be secure in our property. And we can't have a government official walking onto your driveway to start marking your vehicle or marking your driveway to start that documentation purpose. Because movement is the number one thing in enforcing these vehicles if they're there for a certain duration. Movement, however slight, whether it be an inch or not, is movement and then that time window would start. So we have the hurdle of not being able to readily document the vehicles. We could document the vehicles through photographs, which we're successfully able to do in a lot of cases. But those photographs have to be very specific and taken in a way that we can reference a very specific landmark and part of that vehicle. And that's not always feasible from the street if it's in someone's driveway, visual obstructions and things of that nature. So we have the documentation difficulty. Then, if we did find that the vehicle there could be in violation, because it wouldn't be in violation upon our arrival, because it's allowed to be there for the time period, we would go and contact the property owner and advise them that they may be in violation. And as you can imagine, that's, that's not a comfortable conversation when you have to go tell someone you might be in violation. Because the, the return from our residents are, why are you bothering me if I only might be in violation? You're bothering me at home. So we would give them, you might be in violation, and then return after 72 hours to see if it actually were in violation. And then at that 72-hour mark, we're stuck with documenting or referencing the documentation we may have been able to get to document the location of the vehicle. If we have a photograph that it's undeniable, I can say that the placement of the valve stem on the front tire was pointed at 12 noon and it's still pointed at 12 noon and it looks to be in the same location and I can reasonably believe they're in violation, then we can move forward with enforcement. The chances of that happening are, are, are very slim as far as being able to prove that level of belief on every one of them. We don't have the manpower to surveil, nor would we for this type of violation, a property for 72 hours, to see if a vehicle moved. And then we run into the problem of if the vehicle is there for the 72 hours, but it did move an inch or so and the clock had to start over, we have a public perception issue of, I've complained about this vehicle time and time and time again and you're not doing anything, when in actuality, the person's in compliance because they moved the vehicle. So we have a few things that we would have to work around if, if we chose to, or if you chose to move forward on it. The way it currently sits, just the mere presence of a prohibited vehicle is a violation. There's no time limit, there's no waiting to see if it would turn into a violation, so it's readily identifiable. We usually have two visits. Approach, educate, come back, close the case, and it's done. And the complainants, when they make that complaint, they see results. With the new amendments, vehicles would be conditionally allowed. So that conditionally allowed just creates a pretty significant gray area that's hard for us to identify without extensive work. And then we have this situation where we would require continual contact, re-contact with the property owner. And it almost becomes somewhat of a form of that annoyance by us, the government official, coming and talking to them on a weekly, if not, you know, a couple of times a week basis. And so that just really, really weakens how the public views us as their servants if we're making that approach all the time. And then, back to the perception, just, nothing's getting done as how it's perceived. And then, putting that additional workload on my folks is, is concerning to me just in the fact that we have had a significant increase in work in the last year. Over 36% increase in the amount of work we're doing with the same amount of people. And we're on track to surpass that. So it, it makes it tough to be able to put in the work necessary to enforce the new ordinance if it were passed in that way. I can stand for any questions you guys might have about it.
Mr. Kavner.
Rich, how many cases a year are dealing with this right now?
Dealing with parking standard?
People, yeah, people, yeah.
I, I couldn't, I couldn't answer it specifically. 6,000 cases overall across the year for five officers to handle. But this specifically, I can't speak to the number, but I can tell you it's probably the most contentious thing that we deal with. But I can't give you a number of how many we deal with.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
And of those people that you visit, when you go back for the second visit, how would you say that most of the time is the problem taken care of? Or what's that look like?
Yeah, I would, an overwhelming number of them are resolved through our education platform. Very few, I would, I can say less than five of these type of cases went to prosecution this year. And it's a guess, but I would say, you know, we handle anywhere from 10 to 15 of these a week. So there's a significant number of these complaints that come in, but less than five of them went to prosecution because of that education platform we take in setting a reasonable compliance state with our residents and getting them to come into compliance without enforcement.
And how many of them, though, are, are repeats?
A lot of them, Madam Mayor, a lot of them are repeats. So we have folks, the way our, the way the UDC is currently set, it's upon notice of that violation, we have to give them warning and then reasonable compliance date. Well, reasonable compliance date usually is a week. But when you move your vehicle and then you bring it back the next day, the process starts over because the way the UDC is written. So I, I might give you a compliance date of seven days. On day six, you move it, and then on day eight, you bring it back and the whole process starts over. So it's, it's a very arduous process that's set forth in, in the UDC to enforce the violations.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'm just going to do a little refresher. So this, the point of this original conversation was to allow boats and campers to park in a driveway for up to three days like they would be allowed to park in the street, correct?
That's the proposal.
Okay, so say we do nothing and somebody does it anyway. And then they, then you get a complaint. So you go over there, you're just going to give them a warning anyway, and then they'll be compliant. Am I kind of reading that right?
You, you absolutely feel my frustration. Sure, so, but that's, that's the way our city code, the Unified Development Code is written, is that we shall go through that process. It's not our choice of practice, it's following the code.
And so, Rich, your, your point is you already have this long, arduous process for the street. If you add the driveway, you just double it. Because right now, in the driveway, it, it's not allowed, so you can take care of it then? Or it really doesn't save you an effort one way or another?
Madam Mayor, the, the street, and to Ms. Mylum's question about whether or not they're allowed for 72 hours, I thought you were speaking to the, the driveway, but there are differences. On the street, we don't take that approach. I just talked about where the code requires us to issue the warning and then we go back and give a notice of violation. On the street, it's a citable offense and we're able to issue a, an infraction citation on the spot if it's a routine offense. But on the private property, on the land use respect, then we have to follow the conditions that are set forth in the Unified Development Code. And that's that warning then enforcement process.
Madam Mayor.
Did that help?
Kind of, except I'm, I'm still having a hard time with enforcement between the difference of whether we have this ordinance or not. So as it stands today, I have a boat in my driveway. I'm only keeping it for three days, but you don't know that.
Sure.
My neighbor complains and you come, you come to my house. Do you just ticket me for having a boat in my driveway or do you come give me a warning?
So, a warning, we don't have the authority to issue a citation for a land use violation the way the city code is written.
So, now, Mayor, if we pass this ordinance and allow it for 72 hours, then what is the process? Exactly the same, real, it sounds like?
Process would be very similar with the change being that you could move your vehicle, your boat, whatever it was in question. You could move it one inch and that 72-hour period would start over again. And we, you wouldn't be in violation until that 72-hour period was proved, reasonably believed that it had been there for 72 hours. Right now, the mere presence of that vehicle is a violation and we are able to address it right away. Where we would have to prove that 72 hours, every 72 hours or every movement incident. I don't know if I got that across well enough.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but my, the main point is if you wouldn't do any, there's nothing you would do to me today.
In either, in either situation, no.
In either situation, okay.
No, there isn't.
So it's okay for them to park there for a couple of days, just tell them to move it? All right, thank you, Rich.
Sure.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Lou Roberts.
Madam Mayor and Rich. But it's my understanding there's a big difference in how you obtain compliance on the street, public versus private, where you can't get on easily to mark and, and prove that they have not moved for 72 hours.
Yes, you're correct in that. And on the street, we have the ability to issue a citation for the violation, but we still start with that education platform if the person's there. On the street, a lot of times it moves to a citation right away because there's no one to educate. We don't know who the vehicle belongs to. It might be parked in a residence, a business area where we can't associate it with the residents. And then we have to move towards the citation eventually. But we usually still start with a warning, a written warning for that vehicle just to educate our residents.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Couple, I guess, clarifications. Rich, what I heard you share to Councilmember Mylum is that in either scenario, we just warn. But I've heard from citizens who have been threatened with arrest, vehicles being impounded, citations. Are they all just prone to puffery or is that part of the information that we share?
It's, it's definitely not part of the information that we share. We, there's nothing in our city code that would allow me to impound a vehicle or arrest someone for being in violation of the, the UDC. It's just, the authority's not there, even if we were inclined to try it.
So I guess then, Madam Mayor, Rich, to Councilmember Mylum's point, why even have an ordinance to the UDC? If, if people can just do it and you're just going to warn them?
Sure.
I, I guess that's where the disconnect is. What I've heard from citizens is different than what I've heard from you. And I, and I'm not saying one way or another, it's just it's, I think that's the confusing part, is that for us, we have had one understanding and we're hearing something different from you tonight.
Sure, and I can speak to that. The, the warning is not, is not the only thing that happens. The warning is what we always start with because of our, our approach. But the case, if the person does not come into compliance after they receive the warning and they've been served through a method of service that's outlined in the UDC, this notice of violation letter that rec, that notices them, you are in violation of such code and you have until this day to come into compliance. If that compliance date expires and they have not in compliance, then a investigative report is prepared and it's submitted to the Boise City Prosecutor's Office. And then a summons is issued for that person, the property owner or the person causing the violation. And then they're subpoenaed to court and they have to go through the legal proceeding when we bring a criminal charge against them.
Madam Mayor. So say they do, come into compliance, because you're going to come back and check, right? And after a certain, about a certain date. And then two months later, they do it again. Does that start over?
It does start it over, and that's.
So as long as they come into compliance within that window, then nothing happens?
Correct.
And how long is that window generally?
The Uniform Development Code is specific in saying a reasonable compliance time. We usually give them a week. But if that vehicle's been there for five years and it's buried by a whole lot of other items, then we're going to come downs and sit down and come to an agreement with them on what is reasonable to them, but usually a week.
The minimum would probably be a week.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, and maybe I could help too from the prosecution side? I think one of the things that maybe isn't getting across clearly, from a prosecutor's standpoint, if you're going to allow them to park it on a driveway for any period of time, it is virtually impossible to enforce it. Because now, every time it moves, it starts over, which means from the enforcement standpoint, the officer has no way to know that it didn't go, leave, park on the street, go to the store, take it up to the river, bring it back. So from an enforcement standpoint, I think that's the difference. Right now, they can't park a motorhome or RV on their driveway. Not for five minutes, not for 10 minutes, not for 72 hours. That's the violation. That's what they, they have the time to remove it. If you're going to allow them to park it for a period of time, I think what Rich is saying is it's very difficult to even gauge that it's in the same location. But secondarily, I, from a prosecutor's standpoint, to be frank, code enforcement violation cases are not the most serious cases they have. So to, to try to determine that this RV has been sitting there and the, and the stem on the tire is in the same location is going to be a real tough sell to a magistrate. So I think when the folks, and I don't think it's all puffery, I mean, these are. the folks, and I don't think it's all puffery, I mean, these are, these are ultimately misdemeanors. They ultimately could lead to potential for a jail or a fine. Never in my wildest dreams is somebody gonna get that unless they are the problem, they cause a problem to the court, they cause a problem for a continuing issue, that may be something. But, is somebody gonna get fined and jailed for parking their RV on their driveway? Not very likely. But, I think that's the, the point, is that if you grant a period of time to park on the driveway, from an enforcement standpoint, you're pretty much gonna be stuck with it being there. Cause trying to prove it didn't move for seventy-two hours is gonna be virtually impossible.
Madam Mayor, I, I guess I'll just, a quick refresher for, for council, just for my work on this. We talked about this a number of months ago. We said, okay, we can leave it as is. We can open it up and let people park there as long as they want, it's their property, or come up with something that was maybe a, a sensible compromise. And I think part of that was based on what I'd heard from code enforcement, which is, the majority of our citizens come into compliance, when they get great customer service from code enforcement or educated. So, we can continue to spin our wheels about what the worst offenders are going to do, but, but guess what? No matter what we do, the worst offenders are always gonna keep doing what it is that they want. So, to me, I think this was a sensible approach to meet the overall needs of our citizens. So, those that wanna follow the rules can still be able to use their property at their home. So, uh, I think that we have some of the best code enforcement staff in the nation who follow the Meridian Way in terms of educating and working with our, our citizens. And we heard that tonight. By and large, you go, you educate, people get in compliance, yep, there's the, the bad offenders that are repeat offenders that aren't gonna follow the rules, and no matter what we do, aren't gonna do it. So, we can continue to spin our wheels about what they will or won't do, or we can move forward, or we can be, we can be done with this. But, I, I, I don't know how many more hypothetical cases around this issue we're, we should discuss. I just think that we can either move forward or we can, we can be done with this issue.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I, I, uh, wanna thank Councilman Cavanagh for putting this together. I, this, this, uh, ordinance or this, this code is, could, can be a little bit confusing to, uh, for, for folks. And I wanna thank, um, Rich for your, for your willingness to come and speak to us this evening. I can, I can sort of read between the lines on what you're telling us this evening. I think you're doing a very gentleman job of saying, this is probably not a fantastic, um, course of action. And, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I just sort of, maybe, what, uh, that's sort of what I'm picking up, what you're putting down, to a certain degree. Um, I probably won't be in favor of, of going forward with this ordinance, but maybe looking at it in a different direction. Maybe if you're having success in regard to education, maybe that's where our focus should be. Um, I know that, just as a side note, when we were educating, um, our citizens in regard to, uh, um, placement of trash cans on the road, and this is no joke, the next week, every single one of my neighbors who are parking or putting their trash cans on the road, uh, or excuse me, on the sidewalk, were, were on the road. And so, I think that the city does a fantastic job getting out messages, um, when things need to change. And, I think that maybe I would be more inclined to support an education process in which we reach out to our citizens through our multiple areas of, um, you know, whether it be Facebook or social media or whatever, and just see how that goes. And I think that you'll find that, um, it will get better. And, to the point that Councilman Cavanagh said about those who will continue to be the problem, well, then, we'll just have to deal with those people. It's, it's impossible to correct bad behavior when bad behavior doesn't wanna change.
Sure.
So, tho- that's my two cents. I appreciate you for all this time. And Council Cavanagh?
Madam Mayor.
Thank you for putting all this together, cause I think that is a, somewhat of a confusing topic.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
A suggestion, and just kind of following our past process on this, we typically haven't done where we've had a staff presentation and then invited the public to comment. We typically have allowed the public to comment and included staff presentations into this. I don't believe we noticed this as, as a public hearing. Um, I think that, my opinion, again, we've got no dog in this fight.
No, I.
But, I think just from a process standpoint, we should at least schedule this for a public hearing to allow the public to come in and weigh in on this, one way or another. And, if we hear a bundle from our citizens saying, yep, this is an issue, or a bundle from our citizens, no, this is an issue, I think that's important context for us to per- take in before we say, yeah, we don't wanna do this. Just because we've, we've at least got a draft at this point, I think that we owe it to the public to at least allow them the chance to chime in.
But, we also owe it to the public that we set reasonable expectations on if it's enforceable or not. And, and it sounds like it would be, um, staff-intensive and, um, not necessarily effective. So, I, it is up to this council if you want to bring it out for public comment, but then what?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Um, just thinking in a different direction, as opposed to allowing them parking, what about changing the penalty on what it currently is from a misdemeanor to a felony, to a citation? Um, like we've done with so many other things when we were trying to get misdemeanors off the books. That way, the people who are being threatened or feeling like they're being threatened, that they might go to jail, it, it removes that, it removes a lot of the strain from the code enforcement officers. Uh, it's a ticketable offense, but that's it. They still would get a warning, and then feel like we're being responsible to our citizens. Any, no? No takers?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Um, um, I would love it. I've got some neighbors that have their RV out and it's parked correctly. It does not stay there long, but it would make our little driveway and area much safer if they could pull it in. But, it sounds like it's absolutely completely difficult, uh, to, the best word I can come up with, to even try to enforce it because of coming on private property. How do you mark it? And, I can't imagine the time and effort that that would take on an increased number of calls. And so, I was very much in support of this, cause I thought, great, our little street's gonna be safer, cause they can pull it in their driveway. They're there for two days and then once a month, you know, he comes back for two days and leaves again. And, so, but it just sounds like it's completely unreasonable to try to enforce it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I think that sometimes, what's in the best interest of the safety of our children may be a difficult thing. It's worth doing hard things to solve so many of those issues, where it would be super easy to just park in the driveway and avoid weird blind spots around corners and having to take extra wide around strange corners when there's children trying to take safe routes to school. They're, uh, having to deal with cars coming around corners without, uh, being able to even see. Might be difficult, but it's for the children.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
One last comment. I guess if we're considering allowing them, then we just allow them without a timeframe. So, we either allow them or we don't allow them, and if, I'm open to having a public hearing and, and hearing what the public has to say about that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Appreciate the comment from Councilmember Mylum, and I think when I, Richard, no, when we started this process, I think that's where I was. I'm like, let's just, if it's too difficult to, to enforce, well, then let's just, let's remove that element. Um, I think what we heard from some folks is, no, you know, the UDC is about creating quality of life and there's some belief that parking a trailer in your driveway can impact quality of life. And clearly, if you remember, Rich put together a great packet that showed how quickly this can, can spiral out of control. So, I, I appreciate, from, from an enforcement side, just removing it makes enforcement real easy. Code enforcement doesn't have to worry about it. If we think this is an issue, let's resolve it. And, the common sense approach that we at least discussed was, was three days because it mirrors the streets. Um, I'm open to hearing from the public if they would rather we remove it entirely. I don't think that's what we're gonna hear, but, again, however you all wanna proceed, I am in one hundred percent support with. But, I do think, just from, like I said, from a process standpoint, we've got an ordinance. Let's hear from the public. If, if we hear from the public, this is something that's important to them, and it is an enforcement challenge, we like doing pilots. We can do a pilot for a few months and see what the report back is from code enforcement. How many more cases? Does this result in a dropping of other cases that you're enforcing? Had we known that piece, Rich, I think that would also be really helpful to know how many you were dealing with. And so, I, I feel like there's some unknowns. I think this is the right approach. I think we should do a public hearing, at least let our citizens weigh in. So, I don't, Mr. Nary, I don't know for process standpoint, in our agenda, do I, do I make a motion on this then to schedule this for a public hearing?
Madam Members to council, certainly you, you can.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, I'd move that we schedule this for a public hearing, or the twelfth, is that, is that comp plan? Is that the weekend?
No, nineteenth.
Let's, let's schedule it for, for November twelfth.
Enough time to get the word out?
Notice it. Madam Mayor, if I can revise my motion, we schedule this for a public hearing for November the twenty-sixth?
Oh, that's probably not good. I don't care. The twelfth, do the twelfth.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Nary.
So, uh, one suggestion, one, one discussion that's completely unrelated to this, is your, uh, comp plan hearing is on the nineteenth. You may or may not complete all of it on the nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth is an opportunity, if necessary, to do that. So, and, cause right now, there's nothing scheduled, so your first, we, when in December, may be better.
Madam Mayor. Appreciate the exceptional guidance, Mr. Nary. Thank you for looking out for us. Uh, third modification to my, my motion, Madam Mayor, is that we schedule it for a public hearing on Tuesday, December third.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to con- to put this out to the public for December, um, third. Third. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we'll do a pilot program from like January till March, right?
So, what I would ask from code enforcement is a recommendation. I, I know you're gonna do whatever council decides, but you have to look at what, what are our cases? What would this mean? And, how can you enforce it? And, if it will be an increase, a decrease, whatever, is if you can do that analysis, um, so council has that, maybe you can send it out in, uh, pre-packet memo form, so council has that information in advance. That would be helpful.
Madam Mayor. I couldn't agree with you more. I think that's a, a fantastic recommendation. I'd also ask, Rich, if you could get us the breakdown and how many of these, that six thousand cases you dealt with last year, how many of those were dealing with people who were parking on the street for four days or longer, or in their driveways? I think breaking both of those down would be good to know.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, how would you like this noticed? We can do the website and next door, and then of course, the agenda. Is that sufficient?
Yes. And, and you can work with Shandy to, to help getting it out on social media as well. And, just list it as a public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, item six is executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Move that we go into executive session per Idaho State Code seventy-four dash two oh six one C.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
All ayes.